The boys were basketball team. The rest of the boys were present in the parks. He was present. Jackie went to the circle to the side. So they stepped out of their realm and went to something brand new. Or they would not skill that. It has to be with the issues. I feel like the tire might be there. They step outside the box. Take a chance. Always feel a lot, talking about a lot. But I do like. She got a, she kind of got a girlfriend also. I was so sorry. I owe her a couple fifty bucks for I don't hurt. Just see, they should be here. Ah, here's the box. Well, she's a servant. She gets a little bicycle. Did you see if this bunch feeling bad in it? Water coming? Right up in the, she gave me a breath right there. That was. Give me a thumbs up. I'm trying to wait here too. I went like this, I don't think he saw me.
Two people, they just said they played stop time orders today. So I was trying to teach Kristen when and where to stop the time.
Well, the October tenth, twenty twenty-two meeting of the Glendale Silver Lake School Board to order. Please join me in pleasurable diligence.
Ladies and gentlemen, the United States of America, and to the Father for which it stands, one nation under God, we give this vote with liberty and justice for all.
Donna, you please state your call.
Jakey.
President.
Clark.
Here.
John.
Here.
Jason.
Here.
Alicia.
Here.
And Donna, I'm here.
Thank you very much. Everybody is here. Um, first item of business, approve the agenda. Action item, do I have a motion? I get a motion from Alicia, second by Clark. Do you approve the agenda? All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All say aye. Motion carries. Announcements. The next regular school board meeting will be on Monday, November fourteenth, twenty twenty-two at six P M. in the Glendale Silver Lake High School Community Room. Acknowledgement, super hats on. Yes, we do have an acknowledgement. I will turn that over to Joy.
Yes, it is my pleasure to actually recognize Mrs. Andrea Wiggern, our elementary art educator. Um, Andrea, if you actually want to stand up, we can give you a round of applause and we can tell everybody why. Um, in August, we were actually, Bill and I received, and Mr. Sanju as well, received an email from Art Educators of Minnesota. Um, and I'll just actually read it if that's okay. On behalf of the Art Educators of Minnesota, it is my pleasure to announce that Andrea Wiggern has been selected for the Elementary Art Educator of the Year Award. The outstanding work and achievement she has accomplished within her professional career demonstrates what we look for in an art educator. We look forward to celebrating her achievement at our first dual-state conference, where we will partner with Wisconsin. Minnesota is hosting the event for art educators, and we look forward to this opportunity to collaborate in Red Wing in, on October twentieth through the twenty-second. So it's just coming up. And she'll actually receive an award for her celebrations, for her efforts. So congratulations. Um, I, I actually have another little autobiography, actually. Can I read that? Is that okay? Okay. So Andrea Wiggern is a twenty-five-year elementary visual art educator currently serving at G S L. She is a K six art educator at two schools, Lincoln and Lake City Elementary in Silver Lake. She's developed a sequential and comprehensive curriculum for young artists with a special interest in fiber arts, advancing student skills while focusing on the whole child. Through her teaching, she is able to inspire and connect with students in ways that may not happen in any other discipline. Administrators, colleagues, and community members agree that they have been impressed with her creativity, ingenuity, and passion for the arts. Wiggern provides an elementary after-school art club at G S L, and her students participate in an annual youth art exhibit for area schools held at Crow River Arts in Hutchinson, Minnesota. She also presently serves on G S L's district-wide health and safety committee. Wiggern has been a longtime member of A E M and has attended the A E M Fall Conferences for many years. Her students regularly, regularly participate in A E M's Youth Art Month Flag Contest. And in recent years, students have been placed winners, including two first-place winners. Keeping a balance between work and family life has been crucial for Wiggern as a busy mom of two teenagers. She serves as a Sunday School teacher, V B S director, and youth group leader at St. John's Church near Biski, Minnesota, and on the board of Central United Rush Soccer. Along with husband Mark, she loves following her son and daughter's athletic and creative activities and considers all youth she works with masterpieces in progress. And we are so lucky to have her in our elementary schools. Thank you, Andrea, for everything that you do for our kids.
Congratulations, Andrea. Is there any more, uh, okay now? Okay. And we'll move on to, uh, public input relating to the agenda. First act, first reading, second call for public input relating to the agenda, and third call. Very none. Reports and presentations. Audit report, Mary Reading, from Clifton Larson Allen. L L P is here. Give us our report.
Thank you for having me tonight. Um, so wrapped up the audit again fairly quickly. Um, as expected, Michelle puts a lot of work in, does it early for us, we can get in and out. I think she likes it as much as we do and gets it off her plate. So in front of you, you should have your bound documents. It's the very thick one there, and then there's a separate E A S report, Executive Audit Summary. Um, and within there, we always go through there, there's some PowerPoints towards the back. So those are the ones that we will hit on. Um, the PowerPoints come directly from the bound financial statements, so you definitely can take and tie those back and forth if you ever wanted to. But so we'll get started on the PowerPoint. Um, feel free to stop me at any time. Questions are always welcome. So we'll go to that first page. Here you'll see the general fund. Um, we break it out. Far left is your non-spendable and unassigned fund balances. So top line is your revenues and other financing sources, and then you have your expenditures and operating transfers. Here you can see non-spendable and unassigned did decrease by a hundred and eighteen thousand. Um, okay to spend down some years. You're still within your fund balance policy. And then last year, you actually did increase by two hundred and eighty-seven thousand. So it's a continual decrease in that category. If you keep going, assigned stayed the same from prior years. Non-capital, um, you can see here, you did spend this down as well, about a hundred and thirty-seven thousand. Still at about a hundred and ninety-five thousand left in that pot of money as well. Last year, you did end up increasing that. So it is, um, just a one-year spend down there. Next, you have your operating capital. Here you actually gained in fund balance, a hundred and fifty-five thousand. And last year, you actually spent some of that money down, about a hundred and fifty-one thousand. Long-term facility maintenance, here you spent down about seventy-six thousand. It was a positive thirty-eight hundred last year. So grand total, you spent down about a hundred and seventy-seven thousand. So in these numbers also includes fund ten with your student activities. So Michelle will usually report to you those separate. In our audit, they're always combined. Um, with new standards, we had to put those all into the general. So page three, budget to actual, far left is your general fund. Um, so revenues were positive eighty thousand compared to the budget. Expenditures were, um, over budget, under budget by about seventeen thousand. So you actually budgeted for a loss of two hundred and seventy-four thousand, and you came in at a loss of a hundred and seventy-seven thousand. So you actually did better than what you were expecting in your general fund. Food service, revenues were over budget by about thirty-eight thousand. Expenditures were over budget about about a hundred and four thousand. This year, you were budgeted for an increase of about a hundred and forty-six thousand, and you came in at a positive seventy-nine thousand. Community service here, um, budgeted revenues came in, um, actual came in over budget about twenty-nine thousand. Um, expenditures came in under budget of thirty-eight thousand. So, um, you budgeted for a loss of thirty-nine thousand, and actually you came in at a positive twenty-eight thousand. So now positive results, um, in community service as well. So then page four gets you to general fund unassigned fund balances. We talked about that, a decrease, um, from prior year. But if you look, you're still higher than even in twenty nineteen. Um, so there's still plenty of wiggle room there. You're about twenty-three percent per M D E's calculation. So right on target, the policy is to have at least twenty percent there, and that's to your budgeted expenditures. Page five, assigned fund balance here. You can see in twenty nineteen, you did assign that fund balance, um, and kept it the same in twenty twenty-two again. Page six here, so state mandated reserves, talked about that decreasing. Um, so you did spend down quite a bit of that. If you looked in those categories, staff development was spent down. Gifted and talented was spent down from last year, and then your safe schools was also spent down. Um, so those categories are restricted for specific expenditures. And so year over year, those will fluctuate depending on what projects you have and what type of funding came in for those projects. Page seven, long-term facilities. Again, this is restricted for specific, um, maintenance. So you did spend this down from prior year, about two hundred and sixty-eight thousand left. Page eight, operating capital. So you actually took some on your way this year for, um, projects leading into the future, about seven hundred and eight thousand. So back at about the two thousand and eighteen. Page nine, food service fund balance. Um, here you're at your highest level yet. Of course, food service is restricted. It can only be spent on specific items. Really should be net wash unless you're planning, um, some, to use some of those on expenditures, one-time things that come up. So I know I'm working with Michelle, developing a plan to go ahead and spend that down. Usually you, you're allowed three months of expenditures within those fund balances. Um, but Michelle just got word that actually it's six months now. So you do have some time, um, to figure out how to spend that fund balance. And then I was talking to Michelle as well. You want to make sure those are one-time costs, right? You're not always going to have that revenue stream to cover the fixed costs. So you want to come up with a plan for either equipment or something related to a kitchen area. Page ten, community service fund balance. We talked about this, and it did increase from, um, last year. So within community service fund balance, there's like three or four different categories. Um, right now, school readiness is at a negative forty-eight thousand. So just continue to monitor that, continue to see how that goes, and if you potentially need to fund that. Page eleven, that service fund balance, really doing what it should. You levy a hundred and five percent. Um, and then M D E comes in, assesses fund balance, and decides what the final levy is. Um, and then you make your principal interest payments out of there. So plenty of fund balance there to cover those principal and interest costs. Page twelve, so overall, your general fund revenues that come in, here's kind of the pie chart as they come in. You can see state sources, definitely a significant piece of that, um, based on the funding. And then federal, this year it was bigger than last year. So federal is twelve percent this year, was eight percent last year. Um, so it shifted your state from seventy-one percent this year, and it was seventy-six percent last year. So when you look at that, you're spending those federal dollars that are coming in as well. And if you looked at, um, your federal expenditures, you would see that increase. So page thirteen, where are those revenues going out? Um, you can see here, elementary and secondary regular instruction, biggest piece of that, to be expected. That's where a lot of the costs are going there. Special education, about nineteen percent there. If you looked at this chart from last year, it's fairly similar. So not a whole lot in shift in expenditures over the year, um, year to year. Page fourteen, weighted average daily membership. So here's another reason why state also decreased. When you look at this, the, um, student count is also decreasing to your lowest level in quite a few years of fifteen eighty-one. I know that has been addressed, and continue to monitor that. Page fifteen, um, so just like to show kind of a comparison of where the district is at in comparisons with schools similar size, and then with overall the state average. Um, here, so current year is just the district. Won't get that information until next year for the other two categories. But you can see this administration in twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one, definitely under similar-sized districts in the state. Twenty-one and twenty-two is going to go up. Remember, we just talked about the pupil count and those being lower. So even if costs remain the same, this line is going to increase just because of the smaller student population to spread those costs. So page sixteen, then gives you regular instruction here. You can see in twenty-one, um, it's bigger than both of those categories, and then in twenty-one, twenty-two, increasing as well. So really where you want those costs to be, they're increasing. Page seventeen, here, vocational instruction. So a little bit different depending on what programs you offer, um, things like that. A lot of these will help keep and maybe draw your student population as well. So your expenditures, um, a little bit lower than the others in comparison, going up a little bit in twenty-two. Page eighteen, special education, um, cost higher than other school districts. And then twenty-one, twenty-two increasing, um, pretty significant compared to prior year. And this will fluctuate year to year depending on your student base. Page nineteen, instructional support. Perfect. So you can read there, activities assist instructional staff with content and process of earning experiences for people to K through twelve. So definitely increase there, just depending on what materials you bought during the, during the year. Page twenty, people support services, does not include transportation. We have a separate, um, slide for that. But not classified as instructional, so any of those other, um, services offered. And I believe you had direct fund deal for some of these costs in twenty-two as well, some of the federal funds. Page twenty-one, sites, buildings, and equipment. Again, just related to what's going on with the district, what type of cost you have for maintenance, how old the buildings are, um, what repairs you need to be doing. And you can see you're above, um, other districts and above the state as well. Page twenty-two, capital expenditures, a little bit different than the building and maintenance. These are for anything, um, capital related that the district purchases. You can see this is under when you do the comparisons of the other two. Page twenty-three, so here's the transportation. I know we've talked about this in years past, just being higher, um, than other districts in the state. Just depends, you know, Glendale Silver Lake, obviously a large district to get the students here. So you kind of expect those pair of costs. Page twenty-four, food and service. Twenty-one, twenty-two, you can see the cost go up significantly. That is with all of our districts. If you look at those costs from last year, everything did increase significantly. And then, um, with the federal revenue, um, increasing it as well, you're able to find those changes in costs. Page twenty-five, community service. Here you can see you are offering similar, um, to other school districts of your size. A little bit under the state to be expected, and then twenty-one, twenty-two, you can see those costs increasing as well. Page twenty-six, debt service. When you look at these, you are under other districts of similar size. Probably helps offset the sites, maintenance, and building, so you're not taking out debt significantly to all of those repairs to the buildings. And then capital projects you haven't had since, um, twenty twenty. I believe we closed that out at that point. You can see the other districts similar size and state still do have some of those capital projects going on. That was a brief overview. Um, hopefully no surprises. I know the information that Michelle gives you is reliable, as you're getting it month to month at your end to make those decisions. And will there be any follow-up questions?
On slide number thirteen, um, the elementary, you're under, the elementary and secondary regular instruction, um, at forty-four percent of that salary within that?
Correct. Yes, it's going to be the biggest piece of that.
Yep. And then I have a question for Michelle. Within the instructional support services, that's staff development, right?
Um, yes, yeah, that we can follow on that, that we can sort of.
Okay, so the instructional support services is at six percent, and staff development's included within that. Do we still have part of our staff development going toward salary, um, for a STEM position? Just one of the two F T E?
We actually take, uh, point five of each one, so it equals a one.
One F T E, okay. Within that, six percent instructional support services category. Okay, thank you.
Michelle, I just have a question on the food service fund balance. So do you have an idea as to what may have caused that fairly significant eighty-thousand-dollar swing for that to go up so much?
So a big part of the changes in food service is the, last year, everybody was free. Uh, breakfast and lunch was free, and after-school snack for everybody. So because of that, the federal increased the reimbursement rates quite a bit, quite substantially. So we were actually taking more money in, um, on the revenue side. Expenditures, of course, increased because of the food costs, the, um, supply chain issues that we dealt with, um, additional fuel charges to get the supplies here. The other thing that we do in food services, we kind of wait till the audit time, till the end of the year to see where we're going to kind of end up before I make any transfers of lunchroom supervision staff that we have in there. So during this full year, our, our staff that are supervising the lunchroom would just continue paying their normal salary where their paid, um, their distribution code lies. When we get to the end, because we know we can only have a certain level of, of fund balance, or fund balance in food service, then I try to bring that down. That's when I reclassify a lot of those, the supervision staff, to try to bring that down. You don't have to do that. You can, like I said, you can keep that in the general fund. It is an eligible expenditure to food, the food service program. Um, otherwise, that fund balance, like Mary indicated, now they've expanded. We can have that six-month carryover to develop a plan before we're penalized for that. So it's a matter now of, we know we've got some equipment purchases that we're going to make, but we've been kind of waiting to see how things play out, um, with the audit, with the numbers, what the state's going to do, what the reimbursement rates we're going to do. There was just a lot of variables that went into the whole food service programs the last couple of years. One thing we would love to buy, did some additional cafeteria tables, not an allowable defense for food service.
defense for food service. Does that answer your question on that?
One more quick follow-up question that I had. Are there any other FTEs within our district, within our budget, that fall into a different category with regard to their salary than just the one, the two point fives that equal an FTE? Any other of the categories that something can be pulled in for or called into?
Nothing that I can think of right now. An eligible area where you can move dollars, you can charge some of your IT director to operating capital, but we have not done that for fifteen years. Prior to that, they had been doing that, but right now, everything else is coming out of either the general fund or if it's related to community service.
No other questions there? Miss Sandra, are you going to jump right in?
I am going to jump right in, if that's okay. So Mary does a great job for us. She takes the big, big document, and then she kind of simplifies it to our executive summary, and then I try to, you know, take all that data and simplify it just a little bit more, so it kind of gives you, you know, a better understanding, kind of things that we would normally cover either at our finance meeting or at the board level. So the first handout I gave you is just called this financial focus that I give to you every year after the audit is done. This really summarizes just the basics of what we had regarding staff numbers, fund balance, where are we spending in each of the categories, and then some things that we're looking at in fiscal year twenty-three and beyond. So just information for you, quick snapshot of the district in general, just a real brief explanation. The other thing that I gave to you is a summary sheet. I've got it on the board, and then you've got a copy. And this just takes each of the funds. Normally, you see this when you approve the budget and you approve the revised budget. So you can see in each of the funds, between general fund, food service, all the different categories, where our proposed budget was last June when it was approved, when we revised the budget, and then what the final numbers were. So it just kind of gives you a snapshot picture in each of those funds of where we ended up with dollars. And then I wanted to go through just a little bit of our reserved accounts. So that's the last sheet that I gave you, and just provide you a little bit more detail in case you have questions. It's a little confusing when we get down to the unreserved, unassigned versus the restricted Come on this side. So on this sheet here, you can see, the top line I've got is our unreserved accounts, the unassigned. That means we can use that money in the general fund for anything that we want to basically use it on. It's not assigned to a specific expenditure or revenue. If you look just at that, we ended up at a twenty point six nine percent, so right at our fund balance policy. But we don't look at just that amount, we look at everything that's in our general fund, which includes all the restricted areas. So in the audit, when she talks about those restricted areas, the assigned areas, these are the categories that fall into that. So we've got our, we still have a little bit of reserve left in teacher evaluation program that we use for our mentoring, program for staff, for teachers, staff development, learning and development, gifted and talented, basic skills, which is part of compensatory, safe schools, there is a reserved account for medical assistance, we don't carry a balance in that, we, what we get in, we spend, LTFM and operating capital. So there it's broke down, you can see the revenues, the expenditures, and what those fund balances are. Now, Mary did mention, when she presents her numbers, they include our student activity accounts in those numbers. That's how the state wants to see them, so that's how they audit. They include some of our Fund Ten expenditures, and then in other categories, they include the other student activities of Fund Twenty-One. When I'm doing my numbers, I'm not including these in this account right here, because we don't spend those dollars. They're under board control, which means you could say, we're going to spend them, we're going to use them for something. We don't look at that as money that's available for the board to spend. We're not going to take money away from the student activities to pay a salary or buy some supplies for the classroom. So I leave those alone, we don't take those into consideration, and we don't have, you know, a big fund balance carryover in there. Those are strictly set aside for the students, even though the state wants to see them as part of the general fund. So when we take all of the general fund together, we ended up at a twenty-three point nine five percent, so just about a twenty-four percent fund balance policy. When we looked at numbers earlier this spring, I was projecting right around a twenty-three point three percent. So real comfortable with where we ended compared to what we thought we were going to do. The one thing I wanted to mention on the operating capital, that we did increase that fund balance, we were a little reserved on how and what we spent in there, knowing that we've got a big science curriculum purchase coming up, either end of this year into next year. The science team is working on the curriculum review right now, so we wanted to make sure we've got some money, that's going to be expensive purchase, I think, as we get going. Haven't heard where all the standards are on that, but we wanted to make sure that we had some money that we could get a big portion of that purchased. And also to account for anything that comes up, you've got to have some money sitting there in case another one thing comes up, which it always does. Let me scroll down a little bit more, and then you'll be able to see the other funds. So now there you can see where the student activities, the Fund Ten and the Fund Twenty-One, because we run two different student activities, they're in there. So then when you add that all together with our assigned of fund balance of four hundred thousand, this is the number that you're going to see that's lining up with what's in the Now we get into our other accounts, our food service, community service, debt service. So there you can see the community service especially, because that's broken into four different divisions. It's all considered Fund Four, but Fund Four is community ed, the early childhood, or ECFE, the school readiness, and then the unreserved, undesignedated, which is where now all the allocations that we'd have to distribute. So you can see the different fund balances in those categories, including the deficit fund balance and school readiness, which we've kind of got a plan in place, we're starting to work towards eliminating that deficit. So right now, because community ed is in a positive state, it's carrying that deficit, so we're okay as far as the Fund Four in total. And then you'll see our debt service and our scholarships account. So hopefully this helps you a little bit, you know, breaking it down from the big document to the smaller pages and gives you some reading material to look at. So please let me know if you have questions, after you have a chance to dissect that, I know it's a lot of numbers. And we don't approve the audit until the November board meeting, so you've got a little time to look at that and see what questions you might have from that. Unless you have something right now that is burning that you want to ask. All right, just a couple other things I wanted to mention is, last month, you approved the preliminary levy. We now have the final levy information sheets, the levy data. I've started working on the summary for that, and at this point, our levy is going to have a decrease of a point three eight percent, a decrease of just under seventeen thousand dollars. So I know you've probably noticed in the papers, we're seeing a lot of increases come up between the cities, like City of Blencoe, maybe, and then the counties are all kind of showing an increase. So we will show a decrease, basically because we have a loss of pupil units. So that's what drives that. And there is a nice levy reduction again of about seventy-seven thousand in the debt service. As you know, we have to levy that one hundred and five percent, and when that fund balance gets too high, where the state says, oh, you've got enough in there, meets your obligations for your debt, your bond and principal payments, then they decrease that levy that goes back to the taxpayer. So we've been seeing that each year, so that's kind of a nice benefit. So you'll hear more on the levy when we get to truth and taxation, but I just wanted to give you that update. And then bus garage, the ad went out for the bus garage, it is in the paper, it's posted on our website. We've had one person that actually toured it already today, so the word has gotten out there a little bit, so we'll keep moving forward on that. And then the greenhouse will be in the paper this week advertised, and the RFP has been mailed out to at least one person that has been interested in bidding that, so we'll see where that goes. Bids are due November third on the greenhouse. So we're still working on collecting donations and grant writings. We had a meeting today after school, and things are still moving along with all those pieces. Thank you.
Thank you, Miss Sandra. Move on to principals' reports, Mr. Butler.
Thank you, Michelle. Thank you, Jason. Good evening, everyone. I'll highlight some of the items from our elementary report, and I'll start near the top. Just some observations I want to share with you that I find interesting. Kindergarten, we've, we're, you know, looking at referrals that we're getting for counseling, and I'm, you know, working with Kelly pretty closely, Kelly Johnson and Lincoln, we've had fifteen referrals out of kindergarten this year for counseling, that's out of about ninety students. Typically, we have five in a month, and that's with conference week about to come next week. So we'll watch that carefully and work to give the kids and Kelly the support that they need. At all levels, we continue to be flexible with our staffing needs, finding subs, you know, really grateful for teachers stepping in every day and filling those absences. Parent professionals, just flexibility, moving around groups, and we're making that work, so thank you to staff on that. Finally, Lincoln Learners, we did start our after-school program, meeting Tuesdays and Thursdays, is for first grade, started last week, and it will go through November seventeenth. I'll jump two-thirds down. If you look under curriculum and assessment, we finished our fall benchmark window, and our solution focus team will be looking at creating those local norms again for another year. And we'll be here to share those with you at the next board meeting. You can see I'll keep the title information on there as we look for updates in the spring. You know, I'll go to the back, another interesting observation, Help Me Grow is a statewide referral, birth-to-five referrals for assessment, perhaps leading to special education. And then in the month of September, we had twenty-seven hundred referrals statewide, and the average is two thousand. So what we're seeing here is certainly, you know, no different in line with what we're seeing statewide. So I took a look at what we're seeing in the district. Typically, we would have five referrals in September, we have had twenty. So that again would be something for us to watch, is that going to be a trend that we'll need to look at in the future. You look under school-community partnership, you've got parent-teacher conferences, our scholastic book fair next week, and then first grade STEM night on November third, and that's one night that Lincoln Learners will not meet because that is a Thursday. What questions do you have?
Bill, thank you for sharing the kindergarten referrals for counseling data that you mentioned at the beginning of your report. When a kindergartner is referred for counseling, that is not special ed and doesn't equate to an IEP, is that fair to say?
That is correct.
Okay. So when a student, a kindergartner is referred for counseling, and let's say they qualify and enter into counseling, what does that sort of look like as far as the duration of time?
Yeah.
What timeframe does a student get counseling per day, week, however that schedule looks? And then how do they enter? And then what's the duration of time before they exit after so many sessions?
Yeah, so Kelly will put together groups based on student needs, so family change, for example, you know, death, death in the family, divorce, dealing with trauma, and she'll set rotating groups and do that for a trimester, and then work into another group. And she'll get those set once conferences are over, because we'll, we expect a pretty big push through conferences as well. Some kids will need it individually, and she'll add them all year, and then go into the following year. Does that answer what you're looking for?
It's your turn. Thank you. And thank you also for, you know, mentioning the fact that some of the counseling that a student may get and the service that we're providing is in group format, because there are students that have similar needs, and that can be addressed in a small group setting. And like you also mentioned, at times it is a lot of constant session that's needed too. So thank you for expanding on that, I appreciate that.
Thank you, Jim.
Bill, do you know where our K numbers came in at then now, or where they're at?
I would say ninety, that is, I don't know that that's entirely accurate, it's really close, Jason.
Okay.
About eighteen per class, because we just placed the kindergarten student, and we had the one at nineteen, three at eighteen, and one at seventeen.
Okay.
I think who's H P. So Michelle is saying eighty-six.
Eighty-six, yeah. Thank you.
You're welcome.
The question on PBIS, so with the discussion on that at Community Schools meeting, I was just curious from a training standpoint with new teachers, parent professionals, how do you go about doing that with the new staff that have started this year?
So the training is through mentor program and just through participation in those off-school meetings, looking at and learning how to recognize kids. Preparers, we focus on the language, reminding, redirecting, and reinforcing, to use the positive with the language, giving way to the pride tickets. With support staff, we really focus on how kids are being spoken to, you know, starting with something as general as telling what we would like them to do, not, you know, please walk versus don't run. And it's ongoing, it really, you're never going to get where you want to be with training, so it's got to be daily through mentoring with teachers, and then coaching with parent professionals and the G C managers.
Thank you, Mr. Butler.
Yeah, thank you.
Mr. Paul.
Good evening. I want to talk about just a few things that we have done differently at the junior high, senior high level this year, and kind of updating you as a board as to how they're going and where we're at. We did put together a parent advisory meeting that I've talked to the board about in previous meetings. I think the email was originally sent out in June to gather individuals that want to be a part of that meeting. The total number was thirty-four. I counted it today before I came, I had thirty-four parents that had responded to that email in June. And along the way, I had sent out some correspondence, I had sent out a Google form, and it basically just said, you know, list some of the concerns or list some of the things that you would like to talk about at our parent advisory meetings. And of those thirty-four individuals, I think I got forty or forty-five responses. So some of the parents had responded, had thought about it, had come back and responded again. And we set up our first parent advisory meeting, which was last Thursday here in the community room. And based off of that Google form, I had picked probably six or seven agenda items that we were going to talk about, based off of what was most prevalent in that Google form response. And we had twenty parents show up in person to have the meeting, which was great, because my guess beforehand was three, so we fully exceeded what I thought. And it was an awesome meeting. We met from five-thirty to six-thirty, but we officially ended probably around six-forty-five or seven. And we discussed topics such as student recognition, how we're doing that at school, we talked about how to scheduling work at the junior high, senior high level, we talked a little bit about our gradient practices, why they are what they are, and where we're at. where we're at, and, you know, do we review those things? And what does it look like as a committee here at school when we do those things? And then academic resources for our students. And truly, through our hour-and-a-half meeting, those are the four topics we went through. And it was more of a roundtable discussion than it was me standing and delivering, I guess, so to speak. It was, it was talking about this is what we do. Maybe it's not the best way, but it's what we do now, and what is your input? And there was a lot of great, a lot of great ideas that came from that. And some of the things that we talked about, no, a lot of the answers, this wasn't the best. Some of the things that came from it was, like with scheduling, why don't we do a course fair? And they talked about some classes that hadn't filled. And, you know, the more we talked about this, we do, we do career fairs, we do college fairs, but we haven't done something like a course fair at GSL where students can go through, see the department, see the teachers that teach these classes, and have the teachers themselves explain, here are the courses. Currently, our scheduling or registration process is students picking the courses they want to do based off of about a three-sentence paragraph in a registration guide. So that made a lot of sense to me. Some of the other things we looked at was, you know, what would it look like if we put together like a two-year track for students to look at for courses, a four-year track, and then an employment or military track for students to kind of base what they wanted to do as ninth graders when they come in? It was a great meeting. I left feeling very good about that group and just some of the feedback that I think I'm going to be able to get over the course of the year. We're going to meet each trimester, so the next meeting that we're going to have will probably be at the end of December, or sorry, at the end of November or the end of December. And then the next morning, I had typed up, which I was going to share with you, but I got logged out of my Gmail here. I don't want to log back in. I had typed up all the notes from that meeting, and I sent it out to all of the parents, whether they attended or didn't attend, so they could see the things that we discussed. And prior to our next meeting, I'll handle it the same way. I'll send a Google form out, you know, what new concerns maybe do you have, or what new topics do you want to discuss based on being in school for the first trimester? And we'll do it again. And I think just the connections I met with the parents or made with the parents and kind of their understanding of better, better understanding why schools make the decisions that they do and just talking through that process, I think, was very helpful. Another thing that I've talked quite a bit about at the board level was our in-school suspension program that I started this year. We worked at leadership level quite a bit over the summer, coming up with a way to reduce the amount of suspensions that we had last year and talk about, you know, we teach academics in school, but we don't really teach behaviors. And if we're really going to implement this PBIS program, which is teaching in place with behaviors, you know, sending them into the environment where they probably learned the behavior that got them suspended from the first time isn't really what we're trying to accomplish here at school. So I've kept just a little bit of data on this through the first five or six weeks of school here. We've had twelve students that have been referred to our ISS room since the beginning of school year. But I want to kind of talk about that for a second. It's not twelve total referrals, it's twelve students. So the same student could and has been referred multiple times to that room, where they're working with the same staff each day and building those relationships with them. We have had zero out-of-school suspension days assigned to students who have kept all of our students in school. And if I had looked at last year's standards with our program, we probably would have had about seven out-of-school suspension days right now based on the behaviors that we've had. Some of the referrals have been one-time referrals. They go in, they build these relationships, they talk about the behavior they come out and they have been referred back. And some of them are the ones that missed a lot of school last year because they weren't, their behavior was keeping them up. So that's just a little bit of data on where we're at with the in-school suspension room right now. I'm very excited about how that's been going. I'm excited about the relationships that have been built between some of our at-risk students and some of our staff and just the interactions that they have in the hallway now outside of that room and the positivity that you see with them. Our PBIS committee has kind of been revamped this year a little bit now that we're outside of COVID, and we're getting back to what our normal school year looks like. We have changed our student of the month awards. Junior high still takes place during wrap in front of the whole seventh and eighth grade. Our senior high student of the month awards is now a breakfast that takes place right here once a month with the students who have been nominated, the staff, and then the parents of those students as well that come in here. We did also PBIS carnival during homecoming week. This is, we've done it every year since I've been here, so it's the fifth year we've done that. We do have drawings for our students. They're awarded purple panty bride cards for following our PBIS matrix. And they can take those cards and put them into a weekly drawing, a trimester drawing, or a yearly drawing. They're right in front of our office, and they get to choose what to do with that. And then we're working at some school-wide incentive trips. In the past, our junior high has always taken a trip to Valley Fair. And one of the reasons that made me think about some school-wide incentive trips was we had, it's our current ninth graders, no, sorry, our current tenth graders, because of COVID, never went on any of those trips because COVID had Valley Fair shut down and we couldn't gather at that time. So I'm working some out-of-the-box, kind of cheaper ideas that we can bring our school to where they could kind of build relationships with each other and just maybe not have the anxieties of school every day of, hey, we can come in, we're going to have fun today, and we're going to work on relationships instead of academics, which I think are equally as important here as we kind of shape and mold some of our students as they get ready for the real world. Other things I want to talk about, just school community partnerships. We do have parent teacher conferences on Monday, this coming Monday, October seventeenth, from five to eight-thirty. We did host our blood drive in the fall during homecoming week this week. We had forty-two presenting donors. A big thank you to our student council for helping. They've always done a great job of putting that on. And then acknowledgements to our GSL homecoming corp. I added a picture here with our five in candidates as well as our five quitting candidates and our junior candidates that Bill was so gracious to us borrow for in afternoon. So what questions do you have for me?
Matt, I apologize. This is going to come off the cuff a little bit. I should prepare you. Behavior-wise, overall, generally, we have a month now underneath our belt. Compared to last year, compared to this year, in general, not, you know, suspensions, but just kids in the hallway, kids doing, you know, being kids. Is there, can you just give us a comparison? I mean, and I'll be honest, Mr., I asked Mr. Sabona if I could ask this question today. Do you have any idea?
It is a night and day difference, and that's something that got brought up at our parent advisory meeting, too. I think, I think good leadership is transparent leadership and not skewing data. And I talked to the parent advisory group last week about the amount of suspensions that we had. Not that it wasn't planned anyways. I've shared that with you guys in past meetings. But I think, I think parents are pretty taken back by the number of suspensions that we had and behavior referrals that we had. I can't begin to tell you how different this school year is and the level of respect that our students have. Even on top of that, one of the difficult things last year was dealing with parents. And I love our parents, they're part of our community. Obviously, they spend more time with students in the year, but just interacting with parents now on the phone calls and keeping them informed is a lot more positive. And I can't, I can't help but come on why that is. You know, people ask me at the parent advisory group, what was the senior class that graduated that caused all the issues? No. As a matter of fact, I don't think I had any issues with their senior class since this year. I think it's just a difference from one year to the next, and it's been a breath of fresh air. Last year was difficult for staff and myself. It's night and day would be the short answer, but it's probably just kind of, so night and day difference. Thank you.
Matt, when you're talking regarding the twelve students that have been referred since the beginning of the school year, what type of restorative practices are taking place for those twelve students? You know, I heard you mention that they're having a great relationship and so on as they are in the resource room, getting the assistance and the help they need. So they're leaving one setting, going to another one, building relationships and having success. And I'm just wondering full circle, what type of restorative practices are taking place with regard to the setting that they're leaving? Because ultimately, the expectation is that they would be back to that setting and maybe not needing the resource room as heavily, perhaps? Is that kind of the ultimate goal?
Yeah, so I can, I can give an example that just took place today, actually. We had a student who, by last year's standards, was out of this room with, and I was supposed to spend for two days. This individual was, was put into the ISS room for those two days. It was like a day and three-quarters because it was third hour when they went in there. And when he first came into my office and we talked about the behavior and what it was in this particular case, it was saying some not very flattering things of another individual and at first didn't get it. And part of, part of this room is, you know, you're going to process through that with me in my office, and we're going to have these conversations about why that's not right and how, you know, it makes other people feel. And kind of, I talk a lot about the ripple effect with our kids of, you know, you do this thing, and this ripple effect just kind of goes out a lot further than you think it does. And sometimes kids get it, and sometimes they don't. And then they go to this room where they have teachers who sometimes they don't even know. Like if it's a junior high kid and we have senior high staff in there, they've never met these individuals. Or if it's a junior high staff member with a senior high kid, there's a good chance they maybe have never had that kid either. So now this kid gets to tell a story, you know, five, six, seven times in a day of why they're in that room. Because part of the room is build that relationship, talk with them, help them understand, you know, why did you do that and how could we do it differently? And I had a boy today, who was at lunch, I was at lunch, he came up and he shook my hand, and he goes, I just want to let you know, I'm so sorry for the things that I did before, and I should have never been put in that room. But I really, he had made a relationship with Taylor Jones. He goes, but I just want to let you know, I really like Mr. Jones. And I go connect with him here in the morning when I was to, Jones's room is right down on the main hallway that he walks past. Those things, I think, are really impactful, and those are things that I can't, I don't know that I could put a number to or data to of how impactful that room is. But I can tell you, last year, had I suspended this kid out of school for two days, I don't know whether he would have come and shook my hand and said, thank you, and I'm sorry. Probably would have said the same things to me that he said to the other individual that got himself put in that room in the first place. So it's a lot of just talking and conversing and why would you do that? Why would you want to make other people feel that way? How do you feel when you, when you say those things? I guess I would be lying if I said I didn't kind of handpick the seven individuals that are in that room. They have a knack for building those relationships. Most of them are on our PBIS committee already, and they come by it pretty naturally. And all of them volunteered for it to begin with. I mean, I, I kind of pitched the idea, and I had more, more interest than I thought I would get, which is a great thing. And we may end up looking at doing it on a rotational basis just so that these kids can get to know more of our staff too as they're in there. And when we start talking percentage of kids that utilize an ISS room, we're talking a small percentage here. But they are at-risk kids, and there are kids that probably need the most support, and that's what it's there for, is to give them that support and give them that extra encouragement to get through that day.
So I guess just to follow up or clarification, I guess one thing that I didn't hear that I'm still wondering about is the restorative practice that the student that got sent there in their exam room, they came up to you and they thanked you and they were, you know, they were appreciative of you. But I'm wondering about the restorative practice with the individual that they may be interacting with that got them sent there, whether it be another student or another staff member that they're exiting the situation from. The restorative piece there and the apology and/or the restitution, the rebuilding of the relationship that was somewhat damaged because of the action or towards you?
It depends on what gets the kid referred. So the problem is when a student says something to another student, they may be ready to apologize, and they may be ready to go have that conversation because they did have this restorative approach with the staff. The student they said pretty nasty things to may not be ready to hear that. And that's the fine line that you walk here of, I don't know that I want to put a child that's had something pretty nasty said to them in a room with a kid that just said the nasty thing to them. And I don't know that I can tell you what that looks like yet, student to student. The referral we had today was a student to staff member, and the, I don't want to say if it was a boy or girl, but that person stopped and visited with that staff member on the way out of school today and just said, hey, I want to let you know this was wrong, and I'm apologizing for it. So, you know, is there an official restorative approach to it? No. But, but you show me, show me an official restorative approach to it, and I would love to take a look at it. I'm just not aware of one right now. It gets harder student to student because both parties have to be willing to sit and have that conversation. And I want to be respectful of the student that's ready to apologize, but I also want to be respectful of the student that's not ready to hear that yet. So is it a part of it? Yeah. Can I tell you that it's one-hundred percent happening? No, that's the truth. I don't know.
Thank you, Mr. Foss.
Thank you.
Super感謝.
Thank you. And good evening to everyone. I'll start off, I just have a couple of things here. Jeff Jensen, Michelle Sander, Pete Royer, who is our person that works with our L C team and collaborative, we have started and are working on an incident response plan. And this is basically a crisis plan that is specific to if our network would ever go down. And so that is something that is being worked on, just to make sure that we have all of our ducks in a row, and we're thankful that he is helping us out with that process. But we should have that planned if and when, hopefully that will win, if our network would ever have something happen to us to it. We had our, like we mentioned earlier, we had our student, our community schools meeting. We're hopefully going to have our Hispanic outreach meeting that is this week. We're still trying to find some families that will be able to go to that. And let's see here, we put together a new school board presentation that's scheduled next week, next month. Four point O will be here to present. And finally, I would just like to publicly let people know that I have checked in with the D N R about the seagulls and have actually talked to about three different individuals and that are on Lakeside, the seagulls that are in Lakeside. And there's not a lot that we can do. There's just simply not a lot that we can do. There's certainly some things that you could do, but are very, very expensive, very time-consuming, and those types of things. And what they said to me was the chances of those birds being different birds on basically every other day, or on a day basis, are pretty high. So even if you do do something, chances are they're going to just come in and continue to nest on it. So I know that during the fall especially, we have a quite a population on that roof. We did go through the process of checking in and actually having some of those conversations. Again, not a lot that we can do, but we'll continue to do the best we can with it.
When it freezes, they'll be gone?
Yes.
Again.
Chris, can we get some clarification or some numbers on eligibility from the past and from the present as we're kind of tracking some of this information regarding PBIS and referrals and some really good data that's been shared in our administrative reports tonight? Can we also include that in our picture, please? Thank you.
For like activities?
Yeah.
All right, at this time, are there any committee reports? All right. We'll move on to approve the consent agenda. Do you have a motion? Mark Clark, second. Second, John, to approve the consent agenda. All in favor? Indicate by saying aye. Aye. Post sign. Motion carries. I know all business at this time, so we'll move on to new business. Item A, Education Minnesota GSL seniority list action item enclosure number two. Enclosures are proposed seniority list for the certified staff. Superintendent Sanji recommends the proposed list be posted for twenty days to provide employees with an opportunity to identify potential inaccuracies on our list. The motion? Motion violation of second. Second, Jamie. Any, what should I say about this? Okay.
We do this each year?
Yep. A motion violation, second by Jamie, to post the Education Minnesota GSL seniority list for twenty days. All in favor? Indicate by saying aye. Aye. Post sign. Post same sign. Motion carries. Item B, SEIU Local Two Eighty-Four priority list, action item enclosure number three. Enclosures are proposed priority list for employees at SEIU Local Two Eighty-Four. Superintendent Sanji recommends the proposed list be posted for twenty days to provide employees with an opportunity to identify potential inaccuracies in the list. Do I have a motion? Motion by John, do I have a second? Second by Jamie. To post the SEIU Local Two Eighty-Four priority list for twenty days. All in favor, indicate by saying aye. Aye. Post same sign. Motion carries. Item C, Authorization to Continue Limited K Through Eight Student Transportation During the Winter Months, action item. The GSL School District finished a limited expansion of student transportation for K Through Six. Students living greater than one-half mile from Lincoln last year and for students in grades seven through eight living greater than one mile from school. It is proposed implement the expanded transportation services again during the twenty-two, twenty-three school year, beginning in November twenty-first, twenty-twenty-two, and ending in March seventeen, twenty-twenty-three, under the conditions specified for this year, only at no additional cost to the school district. Do I have a motion?
Sure.
Motion by Jamie. Second. Second by Clark. Any questions or comments?
Well, I'll just briefly talk about this. This is something that we do each year and basically what we do, and it's just good for people to know about what we do on how we do our transportation. The state's recommendation for picking up students is if they are seventh grade and older, two miles outside of the district line, outside of where your school goes, okay? If it's K Through Six, it's one mile. And so, that's what we do for right now. When the winter months come, we change that and we cut each of those in half. And we, we kind of say to ourselves, as long as the, the bus numbers don't get too big, right? So, we keep that. And so, we do have some families that take advantage of this. And so far, on every year that I've been here, it's worked out. We've never had the requests coming so much where all of a sudden, there's no room on the bus. And so, by doing it and continuing to do it this way, I think is a really good plan. Sometimes people ask me, why are you not picking up my kid who lives here? And, you know, why did you pick a mile? Why did you pick a two mile, right? And, and basically, the answer to that is because of, that's the recommendation that comes from the state. We can pick any time that you want. We can pick any distance from us, the smallest that we want. But that's where we use that recommendation because, you know, at some point in time, no matter where you draw that line, there'll be somebody that says, I'm just here, or I'm just here. And it could benefit, benefit them or not benefit them depending on the distance. Probably more than you need to know on, on this whole thing, this system really works out well. We try to accommodate families that, that need this, especially, you know, if you're a seventh grade student or an eighth grade student that is walking one-point-nine miles to school every day. Many students or families figure out ways to, to deal with that. But, but if we need to help somebody, we're here to help them.
Thank you.
Keep up.
Any other questions? A motion by Jamie, second by Clark, to adopt a limited expansion of the school district's transportation services during the twenty-two, twenty-three school year under the conditions specified. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Post same sign. Motion carries. Item D, Parent Professional Orders Action Item. Principal Fox requests appropriate and following change in the hours of parent professionals in the buildings for twenty-two, twenty-three school year. Be primary core seven-point-two-five and will be broken down to seven-point-five, seven-point-five change. Do I have a motion?
Seven-point-five or seven-point-two?
Two-point-two.
Point-one.
Point-two-five.
Or point-two-five, excuse me. Point-two-five. Thank you, John. Do I have a motion? Motion dilated or violation, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by John. To approve the following changes of hours for parent professionals, as requested. Any questions on that?
No, this had to deal with, if you remember, another parent professional reduced their hours and she works primarily in the PACE lab. And this is just to kind of help balance that, that time period.
Thank you. So, I have a motion violation, second by John, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Post same sign. Motion carries. Item E, Second Reading of Policies. The following policies received their first reading at the September twelfth school board meeting. It is the recommendation of the Policy Committee, Director Flood, Lieutenant Lockard, and the Superintendent Schools to adopt these policies. Do I have a motion? I'll make that motion.
Sure.
Second by Clark. Do adopt the policies listed above. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Post same sign. Motion carries. Item M, Resolution to Accept Donations. It is the recommendation, Superintendent Sanji, to adopt a resolution to accept donations. Do I have a motion? Motion by John. Second. Second by Alicia. Do, uh, accept, do adopt the resolution to accept donations?
I have one question. Sure. The first one, from C Seminary, I'm going to try to come up with a little.
Pergalon?
Yeah.
It's the wooden structure on the east part of our, of our landscape. We have little pastas.
Sure. Okay.
And it looks really nice.
This is, I'm sorry.
And this donation was probably for the materials because it was built by one of our classmates.
All right, I have a motion by John, second by Alicia. All in favor to accept donations, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Post same sign. Carries. Ten G Miss Linus, none at this time. Do I have a motion to adjourn? Motion by Jamie, have a second. Second by Alicia, to adjourn at seven fourteen PM. All in favor, please indicate by...